It now being seven o'clock, I will call this meeting of the Committee of the Hold to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
City Council members, Ammons, Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
I will request a motion to approve minutes of the meeting of August 28th.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I would request ayes for those who approve.
Aye.
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 To the contrary, that approval of the minutes passes. Are there additions to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, move to public input. I have one slip for Scott Green.
Hi, it's good to be here. My name's Scott Green. I live here in Urbana and I'm organizing an event called Urbana Drive Electric Fair this Saturday, September 16th at 2:00 PM in the farmer's market lot. Mayor Marlin is going to be attending and speaking on sustainability. And as of right now, we have over 17 electric vehicles registered for the event from the area as well as Bloomington, Chicago. We have local sponsors, New Prairie Construction Company, they were the contractor for the Solar Urbana Champagne campaign. We have Prairie Group Sierra Club, Chevrolet dealership in Champagne, and Students for Environmental Concerns. And just sort of broadly talking about electric vehicles, I spoke with Mayor Marlin about issuing a proclamation, but just for some background, in the past few days, we've seen some really great news. China just actually, the other day, announced a ban on gasoline vehicles that they're going to be announcing, and that joins other countries as well. And Volkswagen announced $84 billion investment in electric vehicles, so as it pertains to, you know, sustainability and climate action plan, I think those are some really big things. And at Saturday's fair, we're going to talk more about electric cars, how that, you know, fits in to the discussion, and also educate people on the topic, so.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Green? Just Dennis, please. Scott, what are you studying? Are you a student or are you past all that?
Yeah, I'm a senior in music technology, so not quite related, but yeah.
Music.
Really passionate about.
Okay, it's not chemistry or something like that. And what do you think is the prognosis for America following China?
So, it's sort of interesting. I think that, in a way, there is a silver lining in the US kind of advocating its environmental responsibilities, if that makes sense, in the way that these other countries see it as a way to one-up us, and that forces global automakers, if they want to compete, if they want to sell in China, or Britain, or France, where other countries have also committed to banning sales in the future, then if they want to sell in those countries, they're going to have to change their, sort of, lineup of vehicles and their strategy. So, that's something that's actually really interesting, is that all of the other countries, aside from the United States, including China, which is a huge market, will actually force their hands and hopefully drive the costs of electric vehicles down and increase, you know, infrastructure. I know that, I was just coming from the Clean Energy Town Hall, and one of the speakers there mentioned that Volkswagen, as part of their settlement, I think there's $150 million available to Illinois for expanding infrastructure. So that's something I would definitely like to see. I'm going off, sort of, on a tangent here, but that's something I would like to see Urbana take up, is all that settlement money.
Further, yes, Mayor Marlin.
I do have a proclamation that I'd like to read.
Sure.
Related to this topic. It's, whereas petroleum-fueled vehicles are responsible for over 50% of our local greenhouse gas emissions and are a contributing factor to air pollution and climate change threatening the health of citizens and the sustainability of our planet, and whereas the imbalance between gasoline resources and worldwide demand is escalating gasoline prices to levels that overburden commerce, hurt economic growth, and cause hardship to our citizens, and whereas the transportation sector needs support to move toward adoption of clean energy technology, including plug-in electric vehicles that reduces our dependence on foreign fuels and supports a healthy environment and economy, and whereas the city of Urbana is dedicated to being a leader in the use of clean energy, establishing policies and programs that conserve energy and promote sustainability, and whereas September 9th through 17th has been designated as National Drive Electric Week throughout the country to educate our citizens about the benefits of plug-in electric vehicles and to promote their adoption. Now, therefore, I, Diane Wolf-Marlin, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim September 9th through 17th, 2017, as Drive Electric Week in the city of Urbana, and call upon all residents of this great city to join me in supporting the aims and goals of this worthwhile effort.
Okay, any response to the mayor's proclamation? No? Yes, the mayor.
Well, and I will, I will add that the city of Urbana, in its fleet of 138 vehicles, has one electric vehicle. It was purchased last year. We have nine hybrid vehicles, and we have a policy of considering electric and hybrid for future purchases. So as the price continues to fall on those vehicles, it will become more and more feasible for the city to do that. So, we've begun.
Okay.
And I'll deliver this proclamation to you, Scott.
Yes.
Terrific. Any, oh, yes.
I was just curious, if you know, Scott, or if somebody else knows, how many charging stations are in the city of Urbana? I know there's some of it, Meyer, I believe.
Yeah, the Champagne Meyer has a Tesla supercharging station. I'm actually wearing a Tesla shirt, and that's just for Teslas. As for, you know, other chargers, the area of Champagne-Urbana actually does not have any what are considered fast chargers, which can fill about 100 miles of electric range in half an hour, so it's the kind of thing you would, while you're eating dinner or lunch or going shopping, you could charge up. So there are none of those in the Champagne-Urbana area, and the slower chargers that can do about 20 to 25 miles of range in an hour of charging are mostly on campus, and I do not believe that there are any west of Lincoln Avenue in Urbana, so.
So is that something that the settlement can be used for?
Absolutely, yeah. It's my understanding that the, those funds go to the state and then can be, sort of, allocated throughout the state for exactly charging infrastructure expenditures, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
Just to speak to, sort of, the affordability issue, what's the going price for an electric car these days?
So, it depends on which vehicle, obviously. You have Teslas, which are much more expensive and are basically luxury cars, but you can get, actually, a Nissan Leaf, which, the new one will do 150 miles of electric range, that will start at under $30,000, and there is a $7,500 federal tax credit, so that the net cost of the vehicle essentially comes down to, you know, $22,000, and the cost of maintenance and, obviously, fuel, which is really just electricity, compared to a gasoline car, is much, much lower over the lifespan. They require almost no maintenance. So, the affordability problem is definitely being worked on, and actually Tesla now has an affordable version as well, that starts at $35,000, so.
I guess affordability is relative, so, I mean, until we get a good used market, maybe in used cars, it's going to be hard for a lot of people to afford that.
Yeah.
And then, as far as electricity goes, and so much of our electricity in Illinois is coal-generated, how do you, how do you argue for clean energy? I mean, how do you charge your car with cleaner energy than coal, other than having solar panels on your roof?
Yeah, so that's a great question. The efficiency of electric vehicles varies. Some of them, like the luxury Teslas, are less efficient at using their electricity than something like a Chevrolet Bolt, which is all-electric. And so, basically, based on that, for example, the Chevrolet Bolt, if it were charged entirely on coal, 100% coal electricity, the CO2 emissions per mile are about the same as, you know, good mile-per-gallon gas cars, like 30 to 40 miles per gallon. Obviously, if you have a more efficient vehicle and, you know, cleaner energy, that number goes way down, and you can actually achieve zero net emissions with rooftop solar charging electric car. And so, there's that potential, which is really promising.
Further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have one more. One more public comment from Eldris Melinda Carr, who doesn't choose to address the council but wishes to express continued concerns about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, equity and historic impact. And that concludes public input. We have one presentation, the Curtis Road Corridor Study Presentation from Champagne County Regional Planning Commission.
Hello. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm just going to give you an overview of the Curtis Road Corridor Study and the preferred future scenario. I am, my name is Ashley McLaughlin. I work for the Champagne-Urbana Urbanized Area Transportation Study, which is the transportation division of the Regional Planning Commission. And our member agencies are here at the bottom, Champagne County, I.DOT, MTD, City of Champagne, City of Urbana, Savoy, and University of Illinois. And we carried out the corridor study on behalf of these agencies. The study area is here in black, and this map is to illustrate, kind of, how many overlapping jurisdictions there are here. So Curtis Road goes through the center, here we go, through the center. This is Illinois 130 High Cross Road, this is Windsor Road, US 45 Dunlap Avenue, Old Church Road here. So this is our study area, and all of these jurisdictions overlap here within and adjacent to the study area. So, as the Regional Planning Commission, we took over the project on behalf of all of these agencies, because no one agency can really determine the future of that area, nor can they really shoulder the burden of carrying out a study on their own. So, this segment of roadway, Curtis Road, between US 45 and Illinois 130, has been in our long-range transportation plan for the last three iterations. We update it every five years. So, the transportation plans approved in 2004, 2009, and 2014 as, without, kind of, a future vision or plan, but rather as a study area, because we couldn't come to an agreement about what should happen. So that's why we carried out the, this corridor study. So this is our steering committee with representatives from all of the relevant jurisdictions, including Federal Highway and I.DOT. And this is an overview of our timeline. It's a bit stretched here, but here at the bottom, we have the six main, kind of, phases of the plan. So we start with existing conditions, we then identify goals and objectives, we then went through a scenario planning process where we developed different future scenarios, and then analyzed them to come up with one preferred scenario for the future. And right now, we're here in the draft corridor study report for review. This is the phase we're in right now, where we just started our public review period September 5th, and it will go through October 5th, and so we're having a variety of agency presentations during this time to get additional agency feedback on the corridor study. I will also point out, up here at the top, we have the different meetings that we held throughout the study period. It started in July 2016 and will end by December of this year, 2017. We have our steering committee meetings listed here. We meet with our steering committee pretty regularly to get feedback and approval on different steps of the process. We also set up a separate environmental working group to provide expertise on specific environmental issues that might be present in the corridor, endangered species, or anything that could impact future transportation improvements. And then up here, we have public involvement. So we have public involvement in October, February, May, and September to, kind of, span all of these main phases, and I'll talk about those just a little bit more in the following slides. So, our first public meeting was in October, where we introduced the study, and we got preliminary input on the strengths and weaknesses of the corridor as it is today, and also things that people identified as opportunities for the future. So we went through a variety of input mechanisms. We had information boards that people could write on or post on. We had surveys, and we had some mapping activities to get a better idea of how people currently use the corridor and what they see as the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities. So there were over 80 people at that meeting, and we got over 300 pieces of individual input about the corridor, and these are the goals that were developed as a result of that input. So these are the overarching goals for the corridor. We have roadway deficiencies, which is essentially improving the current design in order to, you know, provide safe transportation for all modes. Agricultural preservation emerged as a big priority for people to preserve the corridor's rural character and protect, you know, the valuable soils that are adjacent to the roadway. Modal interrelationships refers to providing for all of the modes, including people walking or riding bicycles. Currently, there is no pedestrian or bicycle infrastructure on that roadway. Environmental protection, like I said, we had set up that separate committee to look more closely at any environmental issues that arise. And then, lastly, system linkages. That corridor does not have a lot of residential development or people living directly along the roadway. It's mostly agricultural land, about 80%. And so a lot of the people that use it are from all around the region, from outside the corridor. And so, we also had to pay attention to its role as a link in the, in the community, from Urbana to Champagne, and even from the rural areas to I-57. So next, our second public meeting, in the second phase of the process, was getting input on future scenarios. So we had people work in groups at this meeting. There were about 50 people that attended this meeting to design future scenarios for the corridor and determine which projects, if any, would improve the corridor in the future. So these are the groups working to put together different scenarios. We had these maps. It was a little bit like a board game. We had maps, and then people could, kind of, cut and paste to different improvements they wanted to see. If they wanted it to stay a two-lane, if they wanted four lanes, if they wanted roundabouts or to keep stop signs, or any signage they wanted. So with that, we also established evaluation criteria in order to evaluate all those scenarios. So we have a list of evaluation criteria here that correspond to each of our, each of our goals for the corridor, and this is what we use to evaluate each of them and compare them. So to analyze which future scenarios would function best, or best meet the goals that we have defined in the future. So we used the evaluation criteria to score and analyze each scenario, and then that helped us to identify which parts of each scenario were most effective at accomplishing the goals and why. We reviewed that with the steering committee, and then we developed our preferred scenario based on the most successful elements of the, of the public scenarios that were developed. So that's what I'm going to go over now, is the future preferred scenario. It's in phases, so there's a list of successful recommendations, but then we've taken into account, kind of, feasibility and preferences of the different member agencies, and we've broken it into phases. So we have a set of recommendations for 2030, a set for 2040, and then a set for after 2040. So, for Phase 1, recommendations by 2030, this is really focused on this area right here, between US 45 and First Street. So this is corridor, this is Curtis Road, right here in the middle again. And what we see here is the at-grade railroad crossing is proposed to be a separated railroad and roadway underneath, so a road underpass with a railroad overpass. This is actually a project that's been on the works for a while, we just have not secured funding for it. So there was some preliminary engineering done for this project in 2000, I believe it was approved in 2004. And so those are the schematics we used for this, I lost my mouse pointer here, for this section of roadway, which is included in this grade separation. Next, we have this segment of Curtis Road between Dunlap and First Street. It is currently two lanes with a left turn lane, right, but we are proposing, from west to east, four lanes narrowing to three with on-street bikeways, shoulders, and off-street paved shared-use path. Then at the intersection, we're proposing a signalized intersection due to the volumes currently, but also what is projected in the future. We did evaluate this intersection for a roundabout. A lot of, a lot of the public was asking to see roundabouts along the corridor, because they're safer generally statistically than signals or four-way stops. However, the size limitations, there were size limitations, so because of the volumes, we would have to put in a multi-lane roundabout there, and we didn't have enough land or right-of-way in this area to do that. And given that there aren't any functional roundabouts on public roadways, it didn't seem realistic to install the first one as a multi-lane roundabout and really freak people out. So we're proposing a signal at that location. Then next, we have this segment of First Street up here. We're proposing it stays a two-lane roadway with a turn lane here, but also adding shoulders and a paved shared-use path along here that will connect to the shared-use path that's here north of Curtis. So we have some, just some conceptual renderings here. This just demonstrates the railroad grade separation. This is Curtis Road looking west toward Dunlap Avenue, so this would be the railroad grade separation, and this just illustrates the change in lane configurations, the addition of bicycle lanes, the shared-use path, which is already there. Next, we have cross-section of the grade separation. So you see here, we have four lanes with a turning lane, and then we have the shared-use path on both sides, and then curb and gutter drainage on both sides. And this is Curtis Road between Parkview Apartments and First Street looking west. So we have two lanes with a turning lane, and then bike lanes on both sides. There's open-ditch drainage on the north side, curb and gutter on the south side. This is where all of the housing is and the apartments, and then the shared-use path on both sides. And then last, for this phase, we have First Street. This is our two-lane roadway, staying a two-lane roadway, but adding shoulders, and also the shared-use path. So this is looking north, the shared-use path is on the west side of the roadway. So for Phase 2, this really, Phase 2 focuses on the Curtis Road between First Street and Illinois 130. So essentially, we're proposing reconstructing the roadway but keeping it two lanes and adding shoulders for additional roadway width for bicyclists, but also for oversized agricultural vehicles that use the roadway. We're proposing keeping the four-way stops, due to the volumes don't really warrant any upgrades, at least that's what we're anticipating by 2040. And then, a reconstruction of the roadway would also include improved drainage and a reconstructed bridge here at the Embra River. You probably are all familiar with the flooding issues that we have periodically on Curtis Road. So, that would help with the flooding issues, a new bridge, and then also, we're proposing field entrances for the adjacent agricultural properties. So pull-offs, I think I have an illustration later, pull-offs where agricultural vehicles can safely enter and exit the roadway instead of stopping on the roadway for loading and unloading. So this is just an illustration of Curtis Road between First Street and US 130, staying two lanes, adding shoulders, and then here's a field entrance with drainage underneath. And there's an example of a field entrance on County Road 1, north of Champagne. In addition, for that scenario, by 2040, the city of Urbana would like to consider adding shoulders to the north portions of Philo Road and Ray Street, and so this is still a two-lane, this is, oh, I'm sorry, this is Curtis Road between First Street and Illinois 130, just the two lanes with added shoulders, curb and, or open-ditch drainage on both sides. And then let me go back real quick. Oh, that's a big file. These two portions here, the city of Urbana would like to add shoulders to accommodate bicyclists in those areas, but keep it a two-lane roadway. And then lastly, the future scenario for after 2040, if volumes warrant it, we would propose adding roundabout, or at least considering roundabouts here before signals, if the volumes of vehicles are high enough. If there is increased bicycle and pedestrian traffic, we do not propose widening the roadway per se, but striping some of that eight-foot shoulder as bike lanes on both sides, and then adding a shared-use path on the north side if warranted, which would connect, then, to these partial shared-use paths on the, on the east sides of Ray Street and Philo Street on the north here. So this would be one continuous pedestrian pathway through the corridor, but nothing over here. I think that's it for that. So just some more renderings. This shows the same roadway, but the bike lanes being striped, and then the shared-use path on the north side. And then the cross-section, staying a two-lane, but the striped bike lanes on each side, and the shared-use path. So there were some additional recommendations that we have in the document that's out for public review. There's a lot more detail that goes into designing and constructing a roadway. I won't get into all of these, but just to say that these are, these are some additional details that would be determined at the time of design and engineering. And then we did have a third meeting where we presented the final scenario, the preferred scenario, and we got a lot of positive feedback from the public, as well as from the steering committee. And like I said, right now is our 30-day public comment period. That will end on October 5. The document can be, the draft document with the preferred scenario can be found on the project website, and there are hard copies at the Regional Planning Commission, at the local libraries, and the Savoy Recreation Center. And then we will have one final public meeting next week, Thursday, September 21, at 6:00 PM, at the Philo Road Church of Christ, and we expect final approval at the end of October. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions?
Yes, Mary Allen.
So I grew up in the area that you guys are proposing to do a lot of work on. I've walked many a time in that area on the shoulder, so I think that that is going to be a huge improvement for, for the people who live there. I just had a quick question in terms of roundabouts.
Sure.
So you had mentioned if the traffic is going to increase in those several areas, what does that mean? What is the amount of traffic that you would consider putting in a roundabout?
Well, it depends. There's a certain threshold, it's, usually we measure the intersection control by peak-hour volumes, and so that's, you know, when people are commuting to work in the morning, and then again at night. So for Curtis Road, currently, I don't have a specific number or breaking point, and it actually just depends on the area, how urban or rural it is, what the speed limit is, what types of vehicles and traffic, what kind of mix between bikes and pedestrians. So it would just depend on if the delay times increase, in terms of how long people have to wait at the stop signs before they can go, as to when we would then upgrade or feel like we need to upgrade to a different intersection control, whether that's a roundabout or a, or a signal.
Now, I don't remember what the speed limit was in that area.
In that area, it is currently unmarked, because it's a rural, it's outside the city limits, and so it's a default of 55 miles per hour. Part of the recommendations does include reducing the speed limit to 45 miles an hour.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Jerry?
Hi, I'm Steve. Hey. Is there somewhere where this information is available online, or where we can find it out?
Yes, so our website, kuwatz.org/courtis, is the project website, and that has the document, the full document available for review.
Awesome, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And as a side note, we did look at our data online. There are 35 electric charging stations in the urbanized area. Just for reference.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So, we now have a space for staff report or reports? Are there, are there such? Yes.
Good evening. Some new development and things happening in August, so that's exciting. Salt and Light continued their project, and they're out in the press a little bit more now. So this is going to be their second location, down on Philo, second location in the area, but it is on Philo. And it's going to have a food co-op and thrift store like their first location. It's also going to have childcare space, classrooms, a computer lab, and a coffee shop. They've also mentioned to us that they are still looking for some co-tenants that are going to match, sort of, their usage, other types of nonprofits, something like that. So they have some space for that that they're still looking for.
Sweet Corn Festival was two weekends ago, and it was pretty successful with 40,000 visitors and 30 local bands played, eight local bars participated, and actually 80 food merchandise and information vendors. Sweet Corn, as always, was a success with 20,000 ears consumed. So in August, the Economic Development Division spoke with nine potential businesses, so that's giving site visits, giving some giving site visits, giving some potential sites as well. We also hosted a quarterly business and development luncheon, and that was co-hosted with Champaign and sponsored by First Federal Bank. Actually, 63 attendees showed up from 40 different organizations. Thank you, Mayor, for emceeing that event, in my absence especially. And the speakers were CU MTD, Willard Airport, and the EMCOR Project, and we've heard some very positive feedback, both from the participants and First Federal. Coffee and Cogs opened in the new coworking space, so they're actually the seventh business to open in the coworking space. And that's Ricardo Pierre-Louis, who has actually previously was working with a successful business neutral design studio, so he took, he wanted to expand and go out on his own, and is located into the new Collider coworking space. Some upcoming events are happening. September 16 at 4:00 PM is the CU Pride Parade, and a lot of city and staff and council participate. I participated last year, it's a good time, show up. Also, Pygmalion Festival is showing, is happening soon as well, and that's September 20th to 24th. There's all sorts of different events, and the tech is free like it was last year and the year previously. So if you show up to nothing else, show up to that part. September 26 is the Urbana Food Truck Rally, and October 6 is Urbana First Fridays. So some other business and development projects of note. Panda Express has finished construction and is now open. 25 o'clock over on Griggs Street has, the brewery has been completed. They're not open yet, but the brewery has completed. Also, O'Reilly Auto Parts, after much work, the plans have been approved. In Lincoln Square Mall, Satina and Michael have opened a small shop, and that's going to sell some magic things, some things related to fire performance. They're the fire performers who will show on First Friday, so that's exciting. They're now opening a retail store in Lincoln Square Mall. Also, the West Elm Apartments at 611 West Elm, that project is complete. Tricochi University of Beauty Culture, their expansion is also complete. Some other apartment buildings have submitted plans, 809 Nevada, and Cunningham Children's Home has submitted plans as well. As always, the next page will show a map of some of where those projects are happening. It's pretty spread out in August, so that's exciting. And then the next page has some data on it from this past month. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions? Bill.
Yeah, thanks. I think it's public knowledge now that the water company is going to be moving from Lincoln and University. I was just wondering if, what the process is, if the comprehensive plan has targeted that area for something in particular, or if there's going to be something coming to the council, or if we're just wait and see who makes an offer and what they propose.
I'm not sure. That might be a lorry.
Maybe a topic for future discussion.
I do think it would be a topic of future discussion. Just a little background, the comprehensive plan did not envision anything other than an institutional use there. So there should be a discussion on what should be there, and I'm sure that we will talk about that.
Are there, yes, Mary Alice.
I was just curious if you know how the Sweet Corn Festival compared to previous Sweet Corn Festivals in terms of the number of visitors?
I don't. I'm sure they'll be coming and presenting soon with some more of that information.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Other questions? No. Thank you very much. Now, moving on, oh, I'm sorry, was there? Did I miss something? No? Okay. Oh, yes.
In response to several residents' questions about the city of Urbana's possible response to the hurricanes that have devastated parts of Texas and Florida, I asked our police, fire, and public works directors to just give a very, very brief description of how the city would respond if, if asked.
Sure. Okay.
So we have Deputy Chief Bryant Seraphin, Fire Chief Brian Nightlinger, and, oh, Public Works Director Bill Gray.
You want to go first, since?
Sure. Okay, our response to Irma would come through our mutual aid box alarm system, MABUS. And I know you guys have heard that before. We've had some resolutions for MABUS, and what I'm passing around, you're going to receive here shortly, is a memo that came yesterday from MABUS. And Champaign County is a division of MABUS. We're Division 28. MABUS has about 80 divisions in Illinois, Indiana, Wisconsin, a few in Missouri. And all of our mutual aid out of state would be managed through MABUS. And MABUS gets their orders from IEMA, and so what's on the sheet in front of you is just an update of the fact that EMAC is the Emergency Management Assistance Compact, and that organizes state-to-state mutual aid. So when a state needs assistance, it's posted to the EMAC board. Other states look at that board and say, yes, we have a mission-ready package that would meet your need, and then that's how it's dispatched. But that's all controlled through the Illinois Emergency Management, passed down to MABUS, and then MABUS tasks the resources. Our fire department, we would either participate in a fire task force, and that's what we participated in at Katrina, or it would be a special team response, which would be our technical rescue team or Champaign's hazmat team. And they've noted on here, when they note a regional team, that would be a team like our technical rescue team. Task Force One is a statewide FEMA-level team, so it's a much larger team than our regional team. So that's what's described in the memo. So that's, that's where fire's at. We wait for a request to come from MABUS. Any question? Any questions on that?
Yes, what he said.
Okay.
Ours, ours is very similar. It's ILEUS is the system when the policeman copied MABUS back in 2002 when ILEUS was here and former Deputy Chief Jim Page, who worked here at Urbana, helped to really launch that project. So it's the same sort of deal that they would call. We haven't, I know there's discussions with the Irma effort right now. Same thing had happened when Harvey, and there was initial sort of requests, who can give what? In a situation like this, Urbana might donate one or two policemen to go part of a larger group. And those officers have all trained together and have been around together and know sort of what this is, but this would be, Urbana would send one or two, and Champaign would send three or four, and then they would cobble together a regional force of officers that would go down. But what we don't do is respond as an individual department, to say, hey, they need help, let's send a couple guys in a squad car. We don't want all these sort of emergencies like this have a pretty set system.
Public Works, want to chime in?
Sure. The Public Works version is the Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network, or IPWAMAN, and we too are waiting to hear from the Illinois Emergency Management Agency, IEMA, to find out what needs are needed in the Public Works sphere, especially with debris and cleanup is concerned. And in a similar fashion, it would be a group effort from various public agencies in the state that would probably more or less caravan or convoy style down to one of the locations. And we have not received that yet. Typically, with cleanup and the Public Works activities, we kind of come in, you know, certainly days or weeks after an event. So for Harvey, it wouldn't surprise me if there really isn't a request not till October or so, and certainly for Florida, it could be even beyond that.
Okay. Yeah, Eric.
So, couple of questions. So Bill, I'll start with you. The, just yesterday, I was on the way back from Chicago, and I saw, I don't know, seemed like 50 trucks. I don't, COMEd and various different entities, just, so when you say convoy, all those trucks are headed to, more than likely in a situation like that, they're all headed to, to Florida? Is that how that works?
Yeah, usually, on hurricane events, there's many things that go and start in the place, and one is, of course, restoring electricity. That's A number one. So many utility companies will do just that. The response, particularly in Florida, is so overwhelming that they need literally all hands on deck, whatever they can get. So that's, yes, to answer your question, that's what happens.
I know the money is not the major thing, but I, but who, who pays for that? Is that a, does COMEd and EMRIN, did they pay overtime for that, or is there an emergency fund from FEMA or something like that?
I can't speak for utilities. I can speak for the city of Urbana in 1996 when we had a tornado. We had to document literally everything that we spent, and we were, at that time, eligible, and we received 75% reimbursement from FEMA for all eligible expenses. And that really helped the city out in that particular crisis. Criteria has changed, I think unquestionably. The president's already declared both, you know, FEMA emergency eligible, so, but I can't speak for utility companies and such, but yes, communities that are suffering do have a lot of expenses that could be, assuming they're eligible, from FEMA reimbursed.
And so, gentlemen, I have a friend who was down in, in Alabama. He, his son is a police officer in Florida, and he was saying that he was, he couldn't leave, and I didn't know if, at first, if it was because he just couldn't get out. But officers in a situation, it sounds like you don't have a choice. You, you would have to stay there? Is that true for firefighters and officers in Florida?
I, I don't know for sure in Florida. I, I know that in 1996, when I had been here for a year and a half, we immediately put the department on, 12-hour shifts coming and going, everybody worked. And so we just, every, you just, half the department went days, half went to midnights. If you were on vacation, we didn't necessarily, I don't think they called anybody back, but we know some guys actually did come back, and especially that first week to two weeks, trying to stabilize everything. Yeah, it would be, we would not grant any vacation requests or time off requests. Now, you're also juggling, officers have homes, families, and their own things that they're trying to try to work together with that. So it, it would be a little tricky, but yet, we would, at this point, go to some sort of calling all cars sort of mentality.
So in a state of emergency here, huge flood or something like that, the first responders, firefighters and police officers, there's no, you get to leave, you, you are asked and required to stay. Is that correct?
That's the reason for the resources out of state. When our crew went to Katrina, it was because the local fire department did not have staffing, because a lot of the firefighters' homes were affected, the stations were flooded. So they set up a camp on high ground, and they deployed resources that replaced or worked with the fire department in New Orleans. So that's, that helped the local responders go to their homes and take care of their families.
One of the reasons why I asked, and I thought this was fitting, Diane, Mayor Marlin, for you to ask them to, to share this information, the reason I was late, I was at the 9/11 memorial on, on campus, and Senator Bennett was talking about the 411 or 412 first responders who lost their lives in 9/11, and certainly honorable, courageous for them to go towards the, the situation and the fire and the, the buildings collapsing while everybody else is, is trying to run away. And I just thought about this situation, what you guys are describing, and when Chief Fraser said his son couldn't leave, just saying thank you, right, for the service and for the sacrifice to all the officers, all the firefighters, and for those certainly who, who lost their lives. It's, it's just hard for me not to say this at this moment, there's a young lady who came up and spoke at the event, the memorial, and her dad was on one of the planes, the first plane that flew into the first tower. And it's just really those types of moments that melt away the facade and all those other different things, and you just get down to, you know, what these things mean. So I just wanted to share that with everyone who's listening, but also to thank you guys for your service.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on that? Yes, Dean?
I have a question that's completely off the subject, but I hope it's okay to ask the fire chief, just because you're up here, taking advantage of you being up here. Back on the electric cars, I understand that, I have a limited understanding of this, but they pose some unique dangers and accidents, things like that. Is it, is it causing you additional training? Are we ready for an increase in electric cars?
Yeah, we've been training on electric cars and hybrid buses for years. As soon as MTD put hybrid buses on the road, we trained at MTD on how to de-energize where the hotspots were on the bus. We learn on hybrid cars and electric cars where to cut and where not to cut when you're taking a car out from around a person in a wreck. So yeah, there's significant training on how to handle an emergency with an electric hybrid or even a hybrid bus.
Are there some explosion dangers when you're approaching one that's been in an accident?
It's mainly high-energy electricity. It's where you cut on it, where you're going to get into the high energy. And on the bus, basically how to disable that electric so you can safely work around a wrecked bus.
So it's more of an electrocution threat?
Yes.
How about fumes?
We really haven't trained on the fumes. Is that really being a hazard? It's more the electrical hazard?
Okay. Just curious. Thank you.
Okay. Other, yes, Mayor Marlon?
One more thing to add to the staff report. First is a reminder that on Saturday, 10 o'clock, on the south lawn of the city building, there will be a Midwest Gross Green kickoff. This is a collaboration between the city of Urbana and the Urbana Park District to help and demonstrate how people can reduce their use of synthetic lawn pesticides and fertilizers, and it'll include some games, a short presentations, and a raffle for Patagonia items. But mainly, it's a way to help residents learn how to reduce the use of fertilizers on their lawn. And secondly, I wanted to thank everyone who had voted for the Midwest Living Greatest Midwest Food Town, Urbana-Champaign, won, based on your votes. And it was a wonderful celebration on Saturday, and I especially want to acknowledge the great deal of work that Visit Champaign County did to, to coordinate this whole effort and to organize the event on Saturday. So many thanks to all the staff, Urbana City staff who were involved, and Visit Champaign County. This was a really great event, and we'll find an appropriate place to display this in City Hall.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. And are there other staff reports? Okay. Seeing and hearing none. Move on to consideration of ordinance number 2017-09-051, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23, 172 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, establishing curb loading zones on certain streets, namely Goose Alley.
Good evening, Craig Schonpiler, Assistant City Engineer. The first ordinance before you is designation of a 15-minute loading zone in Goose Alley from Ray Street to City Parking Lot 11 for eastbound traffic. It has been brought to our Public Works attention that it's been noted that, or suggested a change from 15 minutes to 20 minutes to better accommodate the businesses along this stretch. The Traffic Commission took this issue up at their August 8 meeting, and they basically felt that what a better place to use or have loading and unloading than an alley rather than a city street. So the Traffic Commission then recommended the establishment of the loading zone that you have before you, and then now with the new information, we would recommend that the change be made from 15 minutes to 20 minutes prior to the council meeting.
Questions or comments? Yes, Dennis?
Yeah, this is comments. Certainly, this is a request that came to me from Alan Strong, who runs the Courier Cafe, and he's been working at that location for over 30 years and has had, you know, numerous times where trucks would have to stop and unload supplies and materials. And he said that, in particular, the linen trucks that come in have to collect linen from a couple different places in the building, and it's kind of a long procedure, and he was afraid that 15 minutes just might not be enough time to finish the job, and five more minutes could make the difference between getting a ticket or not, depending on, you know, who's on traffic patrol or whatever, who's watching. And I do appreciate, Craig, your offer to make that recommendation for 20 minutes.
Okay. Other, yes, Mary Alice?
I was just curious, is there a standard for the amount of
I was just curious, is there a standard for the amount of loading time across the city?
Most of them are typically less than 30 minutes, but, you know, to 15. In this particular case, the initial request was brought forth to us as 15 or 20. So, we had chose the lower amount of 15 as the starting point. So, yeah, there's no exact magic number, but we can certainly move to 20. I think that that would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Further, yes, Dennis?
Well, you know, if there's not too much more conversation, I would like to move acceptance of ordinance number 2017-09-051 with the 20-minute signage.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Dennis, seconded by Dean. Are there any further, is there any further discussion? In favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, ayes have it. Now to ordinance number 2017-09-052. An ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23, 183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, namely Division Avenue and Thompson Street, from Public Works.
So, the ordinance before you is a modification of the previous ordinance, which was brought to the Committee of the Whole in July. At that time, the committee recommended to send this item back to the Traffic Commission for further analysis and investigation. The Traffic Commission concluded at its August 8 meeting that it would be in the best interest to follow the city guidelines with respect to no parking within the vicinity of an intersection. We also looked at not just the south leg and east side, but the north leg and east side also. What I have in front of you here is a map, which basically shows Thompson is right here to the east and Division runs north and south. Basically, currently, right now, there is no parking on the south side of Thompson, east of Division. There was an issue where, basically, some of these properties on the south had been redeveloped into homes. Some residents were parking fairly close to the intersection. The yellow in front of you is the site triangles. That's an area where it's not safe to park and still be able to recognize or slow down in time to, basically, take action safely at the intersection. Let me pull up another drawing here. So, this would be the restrictions that are brought for you, in front of you today. The, as I said, there's already restrictions on the south side of Thompson. We're talking about a 90-foot, 1, 91-foot zone from the center line of Thompson to the south. So, that would be this part in red here. We would also be talking about the red on this part here, which is 56 feet on the eastern leg of Thompson Street. The light blue, that is actually in the county or township. So, that would be outside of the city limits. That would be, we would ask that, I've already been in discussion with the township commissioner about installing no parking here to corner signs there. And he's amenable to doing that also. We've also had further discussion with the two homes here. This, it doesn't show on the aerial here, this is what the old church was. But property here, they have four residents. They would be able to park, say, one across the street. They're going to be expanding their parking lot, which you can't see here, to include two. And then they could also park one down here near this light pole. So, that would give them four spaces to park on that corner. So, the Traffic Commission recommends to install parking prohibitions within the ordinance limits on the east side of Division, south of Thompson, for 91 feet, and the north side of Thompson, east of Division, for 56 feet. Any questions?
Okay, questions or, yes, Aaron?
So, the, do you, Craig, thanks for doing this. I know I had some of the questions around this. Do you have a picture of the current houses and stuff that are actually there? I thought you had a picture last time.
Wait, we could, wait, let's pull it up on the, we'll pull it up on the internet, see if we got it there. Just give me a second to zoom in. So, this would be the intersection of Thompson, Division. This is where the church was. These are the two residents. Here, the parking pad is on the eastern side of both properties.
And those, and those parking pads allowed for one or two vehicles?
They've allowed for one currently. Habitat agreed to expand. Originally, evidently, it was built too short. They're going to expand that parking a little bit farther to the south, which would allow for two outside of the public right-of-way.
Okay. And then you said the other one was further down, further south on Division would also create an opportunity for them to park there?
Yes, yes. So, there's a light pole here. They would be able to park one car right in this space. And that would provide for safe restrictions at the corner. So, a person can basically see it, you know, either an oncoming vehicle or, you know, we have some, several children that play in this area. See a child react, basically execute a braking maneuver and properly slow.
And you said the other side is actually county property?
The county is, so the way it works is, this is annexed into the city. This is annexed in. Over here is annexed in. This project, property, is not within the city. But because this is annexed in, the property line actually for the city goes up to the northern boundary of the right-of-way line. So, that'd be right here where I have my arrow. This up, this leg here is not within the city of Urbana. So, we would ask the township commissioner to install no parking here to corner signs for that. I'll switch back. That would be for this blue restriction.
I just thought it was a little odd. And so, it goes right up to the middle of Thompson Street, right?
Well, the property line, actually, for the city would be, when properties are annexed in, it's, it goes to the right-of-way, the opposite side of the right-of-way line. So, it'd be the opposite side of the street. But that doesn't take into account Division Street up this way.
And the red piece that you have there overlaps the light blue?
Yes.
And so, we have authority to restrict the parking even in that segment of, which is the county?
Because it's within, it's within the city's right-of-way.
Okay.
At that location, yes.
All right, thank you for doing it. Did anyone have a chance to speak with the homeowners in the Habitat homes there? And they are aware?
They were invited to the meeting, the first, let me go back to this map. This resident did not show up. This resident showed up after the completion of the meeting. But I spent some time talking to him and explaining the situation. His main concern was, well, where can I park?
Right.
And his is more of the fact that there's already a parking prohibition here.
Right.
And we had explained to him that he could park on the north side of the street, not in front of driveways, but that isn't allowable parking on the north side of the street.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay. Further questions or comments? A motion?
I move to send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Aaron. Further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Negative signal, this passes to the council with recommendation for approval. So, next we have Resolution Number 2017-09-061R, a resolution approving an emergency solutions grant program, subrecipient program with Crisis Nursery for the fiscal year 2017, 2018 from Community Development.
Yes. So, I actually wanted to talk about nine and 10 together. So, before you are these two resolutions approving emergency solutions grants, subrecipient agreements. The first agreement is with Crisis Nursery. And the second agreement is with United Way of Champagne County, Faith United Methodist Church in Champagne, and New Covenant Fellowship Church in Champagne, who all applied together for funding of the men's emergency shelter. So, the issue before council is whether the proposed resolutions approving these agreements should be approved. Through the Continuum of Care, Champagne County Continuum of Care, local shelters are able to receive funds for eligible emergency solutions grant activities. Applications are completed to the Illinois Department of Human Services, who receives funding directly from HUD and then dispersed through application process. So, this includes all agencies that will be receiving funds under this grant. The city was chosen to administer these grants on behalf of the agencies, as we have done for the last several years. The initial application was submitted to DHS on May 15. The city was notified the end of June that the application had been approved. And on July 27, we executed a program agreement with DHS. So, at its August 22 meeting, the Community Development Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of these resolutions. So, staff and the Community Development Commission recommend approval of these resolutions. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Questions or comments, Dennis?
Yeah, Kelly. So, when, we've seen a lot of these agreements come to the city council. And usually, they're certainly not problematic or anything. Could you just sort of outline what the city's responsibilities are in the grant? Obviously, we're not really actually providing staff to do any of the services involved. So, is the city really just really receiving the funds and then distributing them? Or is there more to it than that?
Well, there's also reporting that's required.
Reporting.
So, making sure that reporting is done, making sure that when requests for reimbursement of funds, that they are eligible activities as described in the agreement. Reporting then, we have to do to DHS for this grant as well. So, and also, another reason why we're administering as well, that in the past, any agency that received funds could automatically contract with the state and no matter what the amount. And it's back in 2013, DHS decided that they could no longer handle that many contracts, over 100 and, 100 and 150 contracts. So, they made a threshold that any agency who receives less than $25,000 has to have someone else administer for them. Those that were, directly had $25,000 or more could directly contract with the state. So, when we first received, when we first were asked to administer the grant back in 2013, there were five agencies and they all were receiving and had requested less than $25,000. So, that's when we were asked to administer. And so, every year, the grant, the agencies may change, but the threshold is that it's under $25,000. So, together, these two, plus our administration, does equal $25,000. And so, we can, can contract with the state. But individually, they are under $25,000. And so, the agencies wouldn't be able to contract with the state. So, that's another reason why we're administering as well.
And could I ask one more? So, you're also responsible, the city becomes responsible for reporting. So, how do you check the progress of the activities that are conducted here so that you know that you're getting accurate reporting?
We also do monitoring onsite with all of our subrecipients. We go onsite and we look at their files and double-check their information.
Does the city audit files as well?
They are required to submit audits, depending on the amount of funding that they have overall. And if they meet that threshold, then they are required to submit audits to us as well, which we review.
So, your department is pretty confident and well experienced in handling kind of a complex issue here?
Yes.
Okay. Well, these are good funds to support, so I appreciate that.
Any further, yes, Bill?
And the memo lists three amounts and they don't quite add up to $25,000. It's like $600 short. I think I, I think I found it. It's, is there another $600 for United Way or something for Crisis Nursery? There's two separate things? I think on a...
You're right.
It's like the third page from the end. I think it's where it's kind of itemized. That was the funding request.
I'll have to double, have to go back and check.
Okay.
What? I think the 600 goes to Crisis Nursery. Because on the very back of the memo, there is the budget. And so, I think the 600 is what goes to Crisis Nursery. So, that amount would be at increased by $600. But the agreements, and we'll check and make sure that the agreements have the correct amounts as well.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Further comments or questions? Okay, we would be happy to entertain a motion for an action. I guess either to do these in omnibus fashion or either one. Yes?
Oh, I'd like to make a motion. Can we do this omnibus thing? I still don't even understand if we can do that. All right. So...
Legal will absolutely chime in on that.
It appears you will be voting on two items. It really doesn't make sense. Three items, did somebody say?
Two.
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 Two, yeah. Two items. Doesn't make sense to do it in omnibus because you have to take two votes anyway. And an omnibus vote requires unanimous approval. So, you might as well take them in serial rather than omnibus.
Okay. Under advice of council, I'll entertain a motion to do the first one.
I'll move Resolution Number 2017-09-061R, a resolution approving an emergency solutions grant program, subrecipient agreement with the Crisis Nursery, forward to council for approval.
A second? The second was from Bill.
From Bill, okay.
So, moved by Jared, seconded by Bill. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this item passes to council with recommendation for approval. Is there a motion with respect to the second item, number 10?
Oh, there's another motion. And it's for me. And it's for Resolution Number 2017-09-062R. This one, same thing, but for United Way, New Covenant Fellowship Church and Faith United Methodist Church. A second?
Okay. Jared, it's the Jared and Bill team again. If there's no further discussion, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, negative sign? Okay, ayes have it. This passes to council with a recommendation for approval. And now, now we move on to ordinance number 2017-09-053. An ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 9.5, Article 2, raffles. And this comes from Legal.
Probably Legal and city clerk because they collaborated on this one. Essentially, what is being proposed is to reflect the fact that our raffle ordinance, the current one goes back to 1999, separate even from inflation, which has been significant since 1999, reflecting the amounts of the prizes and the fees to be charged for a raffle license. There have been a number of key changes in state law. If you notice, in the memo, the criminal code was updated considerably in 2012, well after, about 13 years after, the raffle, our raffle ordinance. And then additional provisions were included in, became effective August 2016, regarding law enforcement agencies holding raffles. And then finally, there was a fairly recent act, Public Act 100-0286, which takes effect in January of next year. These changes are intended to reflect, and a couple of them are intended to correct, either typos or prior problems. I think the memo that was prepared by my assistant city attorney, Kurt Borman, and city clerk Smythe, in great detail, explain the particular changes and the reasons for the change.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Yes, Mary Alice?
I have two questions. The first one is, is that we're now deleting the language prohibiting anyone convicted of a felony from obtaining a license instead... Instead, if the felony conviction will impair the person's ability to engage in licensed position. So I, my question is, who determines if the felony would impair the person's ability?
I would believe law enforcement would have to determine that. We have an ordinance that prohibits employers, for instance, from looking, from making decisions based on criminal record. There are certain provisions in the newer statutes which deal with this, but there's no clarity in those statutes in terms of what we actually look at, at least to my knowledge there isn't, unless Clerk Smythe, you know, through his research with Kurt, has found those types of examples.
Not to date. You know, the ordinance takes effect January 1st of next year to reflect the state mandated changes, and hopefully there'll be some guidance between now and then as to exactly what they want us to do.
Okay. All right. And then my second question was purely out of curiosity. Have we ever had a single raffle with $50,000 as a single prize? Because I want to join that raffle. No, I'm just joking. I'm just curious, because if we're going to be doubling, no, more than doubling it.
I'm not aware of what the prizes have been in raffles around the city. In fact, I've not seen a single raffle application, permit application. They have not come to my desk.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Smythe?
They don't make it up to Legal. They pretty much go through the clerk's office. I've seen one so far in my tenure, and these numbers reflect our review of, of sort of comparable cities around the state.
Okay.
Okay.
Of course, we're not Peoria, where they've got, you know, casinos or whatever, but that's sort of where it comes, the big numbers come from.
Thank you.
Aaron?
So, Jim, the home rule, does that allow us, or how does that affect this new change in the statement around felony conviction?
I'll be honest, I have not looked at the new Public Act. Kurt handled that. I don't know if there's a home rule preemption provision in that, but I can check that out and see whether one's included.
Okay, thank you.
Bill? I think Bill had to signify.
Yeah, I remember a raffle, I think St. Jude's ran it, where you could buy a $100 chance for a house, and it was worth $200,000 or $300,000, I think. But it's something like that. It's run outside the county. Is that where the reciprocity kicks in, where they can go ahead and sell tickets to people that live in Urbana, because even though they're in Peoria or wherever, do they have to do anything through Urbana, or is that's just?
If, if there's a raffle that's subject to a permit in the county, and we have reciprocity, then our ordinance would allow for the reciprocity. As I recall, the ordinance, you know, just granted everyone, if they had, whether or not they had reciprocity with Urbana, granted everyone outside of Urbana reciprocity, and that's now been made neutral.
I think I saw Dennis, yes?
Yeah.
I think I've got two questions. It does indicate that, that an individual would be reviewed doing a background check, so that's something that the city could find proper? Yes.
I didn't hear the full question.
That, that this ordinance indicates that the, there is a potential for ineligibility to run a raffle, and that would be determined by a background check? So that's, is that correct?
City would have to do the background check, unless we are aware through somebody else's background check.
Yeah, so Charlie's trying to signal.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just to clarify again, that's a requirement of the state law.
Sure.
And so, again, we'll be looking for clarifying exactly what we're supposed to be doing in the, in the next six months, or three months.
And can anyone describe what a poker run act is, or a poker run is? This is a, is that a gaming experience that has to do with gaming itself, or is that just a kind of a raffle name?
I have no knowledge in terms of what a poker rally is. I have no really knowledge much about raffles as, separate from what our ordinance might provide, having never participated in one.
I think Bryant knows the answer. Cool, let's find out.
Usually a poker run is a fundraising type of event where people, it's usually associated with motorcycles, and they'll ride from one place, and then play some poker, and then ride to another and another, and then they'll raise money along the way.
You pick up a car, you pick up a car, and you stop, for example. Yeah, and you develop a poker hand.
Okay, well, thank you for explaining that. It sounds like it actually might be fun, except for the losses.
I've done it running.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions, comments, ready for a motion with respect to this item?
Okay, I'll do it. I move ordinance number 2017-09-053, which is an ordinance amending Urbana's City Code, Chapter 9.15, Article 2, concerning raffles, to council with approval.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Dennis, seconded by Jared. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, some negative signal. Ayes have it. This will move to council with recommendation for approval. Now, ordinance number 27-08-049, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapters 1 and 14, regulating special events, from Legal again.
I guess I drew the short card again. In any event, I think the memo that I included with, well, let me back up. This, this comes back to you all from the last committee. You had a number of questions, concerns, and requests, and I believe the memo that I provided addresses those concerns, and then the two items, they're identical, and as identical as I could make them in text. One is the attachment to the adopting ordinance, and the other highlights the changes that were made for the most part, other than a few minor editorial changes of no substance, which were made since the last committee meeting. I do want to thank Councilman Roberts for some questions and some typos and clarifications that he recommended. I included you all on that, and I appreciate you all not hitting reply all. And I think that helped, those clarifications helped with this. Finally, the approach or the option that I chose to take in dealing with the special, or the free speech events, is to address them directly. Trying to address them through some other name or approach, or trying to ignore them, I, I think the proper approach is to address them. That way, it is hopefully crystal clear how the city views and will address those events. Clearly, there's language in there that indicates that it is not the city's goal or effort to create a prior restraint on free speech.
Any questions or comments, Dennis?
Okay, so when I was reading, well, I remember that our discussion two weeks ago, when we first were mulling over how to proceed on this, we did kind of end up being pretty confused about what we were trying to accomplish. And I, I think reading it today, this, earlier this morning, I, I thought, well, okay, now I kind of see where this is going, and I, I think it made more sense to me generally. Maybe my, my receptivity to thinking was sharper this morning than it was at the end of the council meeting last two weeks ago, so. So, but I did come up with some questions and clarifications, and a couple, I thought maybe just, you know, typos that I outlined, and I sent to members of the council, and I think, Jim, you answered all of them adequately for my concern, except the very last thing that I was asking about had to do with, I guess it's my kind of objection to requiring people who want to throw a block party to get a certificate of insurance to cover the event. So how did you really answer me on that? I, I read what you said, but I don't know if I understood what you meant by it.
You're talking about, I believe it's subsection B. The heading for that general section includes special events and residential block parties. What I, section B, originally, as drafted and as you commented on, provided that sponsors of special events and residential block parties would be required to provide the city with a certificate of insurance. What I did in response to your request, which I thought made eminent sense, was to say they're required, in terms of the insurance, certificate insurance, that's not going, not, not, it is not going to apply to residential block party.
Okay, so for an event that's scheduled, and as many of the, as the events that we've talked about in the rest of the ordinance, will require a certificate of insurance as just an assurance for the public's safety, that things are going to be taken care of. But for a block party, it's not a requirement?
No requirement of an insurance certificate naming the city as an additional insured for residential block party.
Right, so they're not required to do that?
Correct.
Okay, that satisfies my concern, because I just didn't think that a group of neighbors who want to have a block party could pull together the resources to go into the, you know, go to an insurance company to get a certificate to satisfy having a party. So, thanks. Appreciate that. I'd agree with that decision.
Further comments or questions? Bill?
Would it be easy to summarize just what the practical, practical, practical effect of having this ordinance is compared to the way we authorize special events now?
I can answer that. I'll answer that, because I asked basically the same question. We're going to, once the final version is passed, I've asked staff to put together basically the Cliff Notes version of this 10-page, 11-page ordinance, so people know, you know, which answers the basic questions. Do I need to get a permit? Where's the application? What will it cost, if anything? So basically, a one-page summary of what this ordinance says, so people know how it's going to affect them.
Also, much of the, all of the information will be on the website. And as Mayor Marlin and I found, that in the search box on the opening page, the homepage of the city's website, if you type the phrase "special event," it will get you to that. And right now, the policy as it exists is in there. That will be replaced, can't tell you when, that's an IT issue, but that will be replaced with the ordinance. And we will have the summary sheet, which hopefully is no, no more than one typewritten page. We will have that in there as well.
Okay, I mean, I think that's, that's great, as far as informing the public what the new rules are going to be, but I guess, you know, I've, I've looked at the current policy, and it's pretty long. I'm just trying to figure out what the difference is between what we're approving and what the current policy is, besides adding the permits and license fees, I don't think.
The way that, a little history on this. The way this started out was, I was originally recommending that, with edits and ordinance language, that the policy be converted pretty much as written into an ordinance. A number of staff people recommended that we have a, what was referred to as a high-level ordinance. And so originally, I took out, I, I took out parades, because they're sufficiently provided for elsewhere in the Urbana City Code, and I took out the free speech events and the residential block parties, because we have not had problems with those. I still had the problem about how do we enforce a policy relating to those, any, you know, through a policy. You all raised the issue of free speech events last committee meeting, properly so, because if we're going to try to regulate those reasonably and rationally and within First Amendment bounds, it should be in an ordinance. And then Mayor Marlin asked, what about residential block parties? And she requested me to incorporate language for residential block parties, and I did. So there's not, other than some language and some cleanup for some of the language, there's substantively not much difference. The key difference in all of this is that an ordinance is enforceable beyond city staff, a policy is not.
Okay, thanks. I think that helps. I think, you know, how it's, how it's enforced is really the important thing, and the free speech events, an assembly of 50 or more people, you know, how are you, you're just going to have to kind of be lenient, or be, be conservative, I guess, on, on the enforcement, be conservative or liberal? I don't know.
Conserve the Constitution.
Conserve the Constitution, yeah. And be, and make sure that when there are public spaces like courthouse steps and, and spaces that are traditionally used for free speech events, we have to be extra cautious not to try to restrict those.
You're talking about the practical aspects of enforcement versus the language of the ordinance. The ordinance clearly provides, in terms of free speech, that the ordinance, which includes enforcement language, shall be essentially enforced within the bounds of the First Amendment. The stress on enforcement is not speech, not speech whatsoever. The stress on enforcement is if conditions get out of hand, which threaten human life, health, safety, or property, then enforcement measures to address that conduct, that conduct is not free speech, anymore than, as one justice said in a, well, an often quoted opinion, yelling "fire" in a crowded theater is not constitutionally protected under the First Amendment as free speech. So it's the conduct, not the speech.
So, I mean, theoretically, even a, a group of 10 people could try to incite someone to violence, and then that would be an illegal assembly, and you could still...
Well, 10 people could, and the difference would be is, the 50 or more would have a permit, possibly, unless it's one of these spontaneous events, and the 10 would not. But if the 10 people are somehow inciting violence, and violence is beginning to occur, somebody, I would hope, would notify proper agencies, and they would again address the threat of violence, not the speech.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any further questions or, yes, Dean?
Could somebody tell me what the core reason is that we want to have permits issued for a special event? Whoever might want to answer this. I, I knew what my reason was, but what is the main importance to this?
I can't address what your main importance is. I can address why I recommended this and believe this is an appropriate ordinance. And I, and maybe I, that kind of slipped through my presentation two weeks ago, which is entirely possible, because we bounced around. I think it's important for the city to be notified when these events occur. Most of the events present no problem whatsoever, but when they, such, take for example, Sweetcorn. When they organize the events, they apply in, under, they have been applying under a policy for event permits. And that gives the city, because they're circulated through all the departments of the city, an opportunity to see what the event is, where it is, is liquor going to be sold, what, what steps are going, is the promoter or sponsor taking to protect the public at the event? And if there are proper steps, and in most cases, there are, usually some form of security plan, then the, the request or the application is processed. But on occasion, we do have situations where sponsors have not provided some kind of mechanism, security plan, or restriction, or limitation on the event, to address... security plan, or restriction, or limitation on the event, to address potential threats. This gives the city the opportunity of, one, being put on notice that there are, there is an event in the city. Two, if there's going to be a request in advance for city resources, we can review the application to make sure the city has the resources. It may be either police, fire, or Public Works resources. It could be something as simple as barricades. If there are eight events going around, not likely to happen around the city, does the city have enough barricades for that kind of thing? Is it going to disrupt traffic, which would hamper first responders, police or fire? Has there been provision made to avoid that? So the application process, which often includes, usually includes a map of where the thing, or a description of where the event's going to occur, lets us know what's happening, where it's happening, on what date, and at what time, and we get a sense of the number. And then the city can evaluate the application and possibly recommend, and more often than not, work with the sponsor to improve safety or create safety within the environment of the event. That, that's, at least, when I drafted the policy, or expanded the policy, and have recommended converting it into an ordinance, that's the primary reason. It also allows the city first responders to address incidents which in fact arise. We've had a number of incidents where there has been overcrowding beyond the stated occupancy limits of an interior event, inside event. And Fire Marshal Phil Edwards has done a terrific job in addressing those in a very low-key way. I will tell you, we've had a couple of serious incidents that have arose, and our first responders have addressed them in a low-key, non-abusive, and disarming, I don't mean necessarily disarming a firearm, but reducing tensions and clearing the area. They've done a, you know, between fire and police, they've done a terrific job with that, with the cooperation of the sponsor. The ordinance also provides education to the sponsor, and what they need to think about when they organize one of these events. The, the special events in particular, more often than not, it's rare that they're not organized well in advance. Because either they need bans, or they need liquor license, or both, they may need to block off, or want to block off a street, or some other, or use a parking lot. They want to alert the city well in advance that they want to use those types of city resources.
Well, thank you for that detailed answer. Those are 100% the reasons I would give you, although I couldn't articulate it as smoothly as you, as to why we would want that. I don't know how the government can possibly regulate the time and place and manner of a protest, or any kind of event, if we're not notified of it first. So I would think that's the reason why. I just wanted to get that out publicly and clarified, because there are some people that were concerned with the concealed carry talk, that this was really a backdoor way of trying to keep concealed carry people from exercising their rights at the event. So I wanted to clarify what the, the reasons are. We can't be prepared to handle an event if we don't know the event is coming.
I think I addressed concealed carry, that particular issue. State law, as you correctly noted two weeks ago, prohibits concealed carry at these kinds of events. Of course, that's more of a Second Amendment issue, and not a First Amendment issue.
Right, and just for the importance of accuracy, you have here below the little quote of the law, where it says, "Thus, no change is needed to draft the ordinance, since the issue is covered under the Firearms Concealed Carry Act." This is a technicality, but I don't think we can pass any ordinance that would inhibit the state law on concealed carry. I think that law pre- preempts. Any home rule authority on that?
I believe that there is a home rule preemption provision in the Concealed Carry Act. But if you'd like me to verify with citation, I'll be happy to do that.
No, I just wanted to note that, if I'm correct on that. So, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, Dennis?
And one other aspect of this ordinance, and I guess it's, it's good to know that what we're doing is we're converting policy to an ordinance, so that we can have stronger means of enforcing. But section fourteen dash fifty-two C brings up how we address a situation which is a private concern, which doesn't require a lot of oversight at the time, because it's happening in a, in a situation which doesn't require permitting, but that there be an, an experience during the event which does call for, for a city involvement to provide either manpower or some kind of oversight because of events at the, at the event. And what, what it's, what it signals, or it initiates, then, is that for future events for the next twelve months, that sponsor would be required to obtain a permit, because, partly because the event went awry the first time, and so to make sure that during the coming year, that doesn't happen again a second time, the city gains the right to require a permit for the next events held at that location. So that's one, that's one response that the city has, I think, needed to address issues where things get out of hand at an event, and we don't want these things to be repeating. So, is my understanding of that section of the ordinance that we're looking at today correct?
Yes. Further, if you will note, a little further on in the ordinance, it provides that the sponsor, who now will be required because of a problem at a prior event, now will be required to obtain a permit, when otherwise he or she would not. They're given a written notice of that fact and why, and they are given an opportunity to appeal that.
So it's kind of an educational experience, too, for them, so they can conduct their events more appropriately?
Correct. We want events in the city, and we want them handled effectively, so they do not threaten human health, life, safety, or property. And sometimes, we've had a couple of situations where sponsors have needed a little bit of education, and staff has worked with these sponsors, and they have improved, and we haven't had serious problems.
Bill?
Just rereading the definition of special event, item C, it seems like that's going to be the one, it's going to be kind of hard to interpret, so maybe that's where the public information will come in. It just says, "The sponsor will be selling, or serving, or will be allowing another person to sell or serve alcoholic liquor for consumption on or off the site of the event, or allow a person to consume alcoholic liquor at the site of and during the event." And we're talking about potentially private property, right?
I didn't hear the whole question.
The definition of special event, fourteen fifty-one, in definitions, and then item C under that? I mean, just because someone's selling alcohol, and it's an event, it could be on private property, and they'd still need a special event permit?
If they're having a special event which requires city resources, yes. If they are not, if they're, let's say an establishment has a rose bowl, let's say they have a band within their establishment, it's an event, obviously, they're having a band in their event, or in their establishment, and they're selling liquor. Absent a prior problem with the city, no, it would not require an event. I mean, otherwise, every, every establishment in the city that happens to be selling alcohol would need a, their normal liquor license plus an event permit, no. But if you look at something like Bunny's, which has a number of events over the summer, where they use the parking lot and rope off part of our parking lot, city property, to conduct the event, and they have a, and an ingress and an egress, and they provide the security for checking IDs, for age, and, and make sure their folks are Basset trained, that would require, even though they're serving the alcohol in their establishment, as I understand it, they, that's what I understand it to be, and they have a band, they require a special event permit, even though they're selling the alcohol in their establishment. Why? Because they're using a city resource, as defined, a defined city resource.
Okay, I guess, item C doesn't say anything about city resources, but I guess that'll be clarified in the, in the information, in the pamphlet.
Okay, I think Aaron was hoping to say something.
Yes, so, the part that still strikes me as odd is that, there, there's very little, I think, conversation as to what sort of really brought this about, why we are moving it from a, a policy to an ordinance of some sort. I think you alluded to prevented, being able to prevent certain things from happening. I think the last time we discussed this, is that correct?
Part of the reason for moving this in to, well, the main reason for moving it into a policy other than advanced notices, the city has no lawful authority to enforce, you know, a policy on a promoter of an event. They have been very cooperative, and they have applied, for the most part, for special event permits, or have inquired, made inquiry of Public Works, John Collins typically, who administers this, and inquired whether they need a permit, and he's provided them, based on the policy, a yes or a no answer. But if he were to say, "Yes, you need a permit," and they say, "Well, this is a policy, you can't enforce your policy against me," that sponsor would be correct. Do we have no way of enforcing a policy unless it's an ordinance, unless it's a...
Do we, do we have issues with sponsors not wanting to have permits, or something?
No, we haven't had that problem, but there are other aspects of the policy that we need to enforce, like imposing restrictions, or security plans, or limitations on it. The authority, other than general police authority, which sponsors may or may not know about, to clear an event or limit conduct while an event is occurring, this puts them on notice that, that the city has that lowercase p, police power, to do that. It's one of the, you know, clearly, you know, public welfare, preserving public welfare is within the general police powers of government.
Looks to me as though Mayor Marilyn wants to also...
I think Deputy Chief Seraphin could probably give some examples of some of the problems that have arisen, that, that kind of gave rise to this move from the policy to the ordinance.
So there, so there have been some incidents, sometimes at the Independent Media Center, sometimes at fraternities, sometimes at other parties that we've had, where there have been gatherings that have gotten large, gotten out of hand, we've had issues at Canopy Club, just other places around town. And this is the kind of thing that would help us to not have repeat problems again and again. So, I'll answer some questions, I suppose, but it's really that simple, I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's more complex than that.
So I don't, I had some follow-ups, but I don't know if I have anything for, for you, Ryan. My, my question, so is, so let's say, for instance, at the Sweet Corn Festival, we brought forty thousand people in, and, great event, and because there was some alcohol involved, there was a, a fight, and somebody was, I don't know, injured, cut with a bottle or, or something like that. Would the UBA have to have a special permit to have Sweet Corn Festival the next year?
Yes.
And so, any event, a bar, for instance, there's a bar fight, and somebody gets hurt in the bar, they would have to have a special permit to, if the police were called there to intervene?
You have to add one more fact to your hypothetical. If they are publicizing an event, not just people showing up at the bar, and somebody, embodies a little bit too much and cracks somebody else over the head with a bottle, if that's the situation you're talking about, no, they wouldn't need a special event permit to open their bar the next day, and every day thereafter for a year.
So underneath a, a lot of this, you know, as Deputy Chief Seraphin said, there's some issues at the Canopy Club, Independent Media Center, and places like that. It's no secret that part of my concern is in relationship to, are we putting a ordinance in place really to deal with a couple of situations, or repeated situations that seem to get out of hand at a couple of locations? Because it's no coincidence that after those incidents took place at the Independent Media Center, that now we're changing the policy to an ordinance. So I don't want to act like it, that's not what part of the issue is, that is what part of the issue is. And so, I'm just wondering, are we creating an ordinance just for that, but we have no intentions of actually applying it to, to everyone? Because I'm, I'm hard-pressed to believe that if there was a fight or shooting at the Sweet Corn Festival, that we would venture to not issue the permit so we can have the Sweet Corn Festival next year, because there was a, a situation or some act of violence that took place? So, those things that generate revenue and opportunities like that for the city, I don't think we're going to treat them in the same way that we would treat a smaller venue, like the Independent Media Center, or some of those other different places. I think we would just simply supply more police officers to that situation. Maybe I'm wrong, but...
I'll be honest with you, I think you're wrong, and I'll explain why. The policy from which now this full ordinance is derived was adopted long before the incidents at the IMC. In terms of the Canopy Club, the city has worked very well and very cooperatively with the owners and operators of the Canopy Club for their events. And we haven't had problems for a number of years with the Canopy Club, because we've worked with them, dealing with the ordinance, well, policy, because they've been cooperative and all. In terms of, gee, if there's a shooting, or, you know, a couple of people pull out weapons at Sweet Corn, well, first of all, they have a permit, they will continue to be required to get a permit, but they will be required, you're smiling, but they will be required to take special steps to prevent that at the next event. I don't think the city will let that pass, just because it happened to be Sweet Corn, or the UBA, or any other organization that maybe we haven't, haven't had a problem prior to then. Our goal, the last, well, the last thing we want is to allow events to occur which have created problems, and taking no action in the future for addressing those problems. I can assure you, if I'm aware of a problem at Sweet Corn, when the special event permit comes my way, and I'm the last to review it before it goes to the mayor, or back to Public Works, I will indicate, "Where is the security plan?" because we had a problem, just like I've done at some other events. Where's the security plan? Where is the limitation on the event? What is being provided? And in some instances, where some sponsors have provided security events, they say, "Well, our own staff are going to take care of it, they're going to be our security." Well, they're not trained, they're trained as bar staff, serving, Basset training, they're not trained in crowd control, they're not trained in diffusing crowd situations that get out of hand, and we've required them to hire professional security. When they have demonstrated, I'm thinking of a couple of occasions, where they've demonstrated on more than one occasion, that they're not, their staff is not equipped to act as a security staff. You know, throwing a T-shirt on their back, with the word "security" on their back, doesn't make them security staff, they're not trained.
I, I completely understand that there's a, a need to make sure that we alleviate, you know, threats to property, life, and, and things like that. So, when you say that we worked with people at the Canopy, the owners at the Canopy Club, there's been some pretty high-profile and serious incidents that have taken place at the Canopy Club over the years, basketball players and football...
I personally haven't worked with them, but most of the problems with Canopy Club were resolved by the time I came here, as far as I know.
I'm just simply saying that... I'm just simply saying that my understanding is that whether it's the IMC or some other different places where there were some conversations with the ownership or management there and that there was a need for security, that there was an attempt to also work with those entities. So, you know, I just want to make sure we're being fair and equitable across the board. And if there's going to be a policy or ordinance that passes here for something like that, then, you know, I think people are going to be watching to make sure that it's not something that is applied, you know, because there's an incident or a group of folks who had a party at some IMC or the Flight Bar or something like that, that they're not going to result in the loss of ability to have a function or have an event while some of these other places that are a little more, have a little more notoriety and have a better relationship, I guess, maybe with the city or something like that, that they'll be able to continue. So just want to make sure that we're going to be fair and equitable to everybody else who's going to have to deal with this issue.
From my perspective, I agree with you 100%. And I would hope, and my experience dealing with the various departments with the policy, we've been very, very cooperative. We've been watchful regardless of who has sponsored the events, whether they're people who are well-known and do events and we like their events. As far as I know, my experience has been in the almost five years I've been here, that the application of whatever policy was in place at the time the application came in, the rules or the policy, and hopefully this ordinance will be as the policy was and still is for the moment, equitably applied. But I agree with you.
Further, yes, Mary Alice?
Somebody who lives very close to campus and has had lots of experience.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
As somebody who lives very close to campus and has quite a bit of experience with unofficial, I will say, A, unofficial enforcement has gone up considerably since I've lived there over the past 14 years, and I think that there's been a big improvement. So my question is this, so does the, if somebody quote-unquote violates, you know, causes harm at a private party, and does that follow the person or does it follow the location?
It follows the sponsor.
So it follows the person?
Well, you say person, there are a lot of people at these events. Let me give you an example why I have to say sponsor. Let's say, let's take the IMC, for instance. Let's say somebody wants to host an event at the IMC, and the people who are at the IMC, the owner of the IMC and the people who work the IMC, they take the precautions they are able to take. And yet the sponsor of the event, let's say, allows underage drinking, knowingly allows persons under the age of 21 to slip alcohol into the event, and the event gets out of hand. The IMC is not the sponsor of the event, they're the property owner. And if they've taken reasonable measures with whatever they can take, it's the sponsor, even though the sponsor doesn't own that property and may never show up on that property again. So the problem goes, for private property events, the problem with the event goes with the sponsor.
Okay, all right, so.
I mean, if a fraternity sponsors a party, it's the fraternity. Often, and I don't know so much about all the houses here in Illinois at U of I, I know they're one of the largest Greek organizations in the company, but when I was active in a fraternity, the house, our chapter, did not own our house. We rented it from the, like the Zeta House situation, we rented it from a foundation of the National Fraternity. They owned the house. But when we had parties, we were the sponsors.
So just to follow up, in fact, we had, I had a constituent contact me last week because an organization was sponsoring a beginning of the school year party, and there was a whole bunch of people in the yard and so forth. They didn't call the cops, so there were no city resources deployed. It was actually a religious organization that was sponsoring it. They had advertised it, not only at Quad Day, but also on Facebook, saying, please come and celebrate the beginning of the school year. So in that case, would that be an event that is sponsored by a group of people? And let's pretend for the moment that there was a big fight that broke out and the police had to be called to this religious welcome to the school year event. Probably won't happen, but in that case, if that happened, would the next time that organization would sponsor an event, they would be required to get a special permit? Does that make sense?
You've included a lot of facts.
I have, I have.
If no city resources were deployed, frankly, we wouldn't know of the event other than maybe some notice on Facebook. But if city resources are deployed to address, you know, that situation where there was a threat to human life, health, and safety, or neighboring property for that matter, the next time that group wants to hold an event, that the sponsor would have to hold an event. Now, there, like every other law, there are loopholes. We cannot plan for every single loophole. Let's say it's the president this year of XYZ fraternity that is the sponsor, the signatory on the application for permit, and the event goes completely awry. And let's really make it gross, there is a stabbing at the event for some reason. And then eight months later, the presidency of the house changes, and a new president sponsors event. Is the house the sponsor of the event? Is the president the sponsor of the event? We have to look at the application. But theoretically, by changing sponsors, you might avoid that. But we can't, if we address every situation, then the ordinance is 100 pages and it's virtually unintelligible. We're getting there now.
Now, and I think you've done an excellent job of taking into consideration all the concerns earlier. I was just kind of curious, based on an email that I received the last week, so thank you.
Aaron?
Does unofficial actually spill into Urbana at all?
Has what?
And so we do use city resources, right?
I, I'm having trouble, you're asking whether they use city resources for unofficial? Yes.
Then, people have died, students have died.
Yes.
Do we, do we, does this ordinance now say to us that, hey, you know what? You can't do unofficial in the city of Urbana?
Well, in the past, first of all, the question, the first question that has to be asked is, is unofficial a special event that's sponsored by somebody? I don't believe it is. I think it's just students who, over the years, have declared.
That's pretty slippery, Jim. That's just pretty doggone slippery to say. We know that it's sponsored by the bars, right?
If it's sponsored by the bars, and if it's sponsored by the bars and they, a bar, an event at a bar consumes a city resource, as you say, a shooting, and, you know, police officers have to deal with that situation, then the next, if special, if the unofficial occurs within a 12-month period of the last event at which that shooting occurred, yeah, that bar, under this ordinance, would be required if they're having a special event, not just opening the bar like they always do at whatever time the bar normally opens and then closes and all, and somebody gets tanked up and goes out onto the street and shoots somebody.
Okay, I just want to make sure, look.
There are all kinds of situations.
I understand there's all kinds of situations. I don't want to be here all night long going through this, but, you know, I think the point is being made, from my perspective, that this is an attempt to try to get at something small, but it continues to get much bigger than that. And I shouldn't say small, but it's an attempt to do something that I think is understandable. But when we look at these types of scenarios, where you're telling me in the ordinance that you want to make sure that property's not damaged, nobody's hurt, no threat of human life, and we raise the issue, as Councilwoman Alderwoman Wu says, about unofficial, one of the most destructive of properties, students dying, and we're going to say that because nobody actually sponsors it, we're going to continue to give resources and that. I just think that there's got to be some sort of effort made to address that.
Agreed.
If we want to address it in other places.
And under this ordinance, it will be addressed. It will be addressed. Remember, this ordinance hasn't been adopted and that provision is not in the policy.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments? Dean?
Let me just say quickly that I've only, well, I've been gone for a little more than a year from the police department, but in my 15 years here, I can tell you that when an unplanned-for event spills over and is out of control, it can be disastrous for the city and for our shift here. We're talking about a police department that at times, and again, I've been gone for a year, at many times has three or four officers on the street in the middle of the night and one or two sergeants. A racial I'll never understand, but, so if something happens, and I won't put a bar name on it because I don't want anybody to think I'm picking on them, but it will take the entire shift, and that entire shift is no longer working their beat in the city. So they are, the neighborhoods that they used to watch are being neglected while they are gone over there. They're also being backed up by the U of I, by the Sheriff's Department, and anybody else who might be coming through the area to help them. So it's affecting those departments too. So I think it's an important tool for the police department, and that's why I'll support it, and I appreciate the clarification earlier on why we were doing it. The conversation just got so long, I kind of lost track of why we were moving forward with it, but that's why I'll support it 100%, so thank you.
Further questions or comments, Dennis?
Right. I just thought that, well, when the ordinance is motion, the motion is made that we should include the corrections that Jim provided for us earlier today. And also, it might be useful, when it's on the website, to give specific examples, you know, scenario A, scenario B, scenario C, so that people don't have to, like, brain through the words of the ordinance to try to figure out if this applies or not, but you could give simple examples of when this kicks in and when it doesn't. I think that would be a useful help to people when they try to understand how this is being applied to their event. Maybe with that, I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
To, I move that we send ordinance 2017-08-049, an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter 1 and 14 regulating special events, to the City Council with approval.
And I will second it.
Okay, move by Dennis, seconded by Dean. Clarification, please.
Mr. Roberts, does your motion include the corrections you just mentioned?
Yes, it does. Thank you. And the sheet is here, provided by, responses provided by our lawyer.
Okay, yes, Jim.
Just, so you're comforted in your motion, and I appreciate your motion. I have already made the changes after our, after our email exchange, I made the changes. I didn't get them out to you all because of the lateness, you know, and giving you yet two more items to look at. I figured by sending you all the email that I sent to Councilman Roberts, you would see or at least understand that those changes will be made, they have been made.
Great. So it's the updated version that I'm recommending be moved to council?
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a negative comment, no? Okay. Finally, moving on to Resolution Number 2017-08-059R, Resolution Regarding the Release of Closed Session Minutes for the Period Ending August 28, 2017, from the City Council.
Okay, before you is our schedules A, B, and C, as discussed at the several closed sessions that we've had reviewing these minutes. It is pretty much ready to go, except that I have, in making the first serious pass through storage, have come up with six recordings that will replace the missing items in Schedule C so far. That's just on the first good pass I've made. Would you like to have a closed session to review those six sets of minutes next Monday before voting on this, so that those could be included? Or do you want to put them off to the next review, which will be in January or February of next year?
Comment, yes, Bill?
Could we put them off until the next closed session meeting for some other purpose?
Sure.
I'd prefer not to have a special closed session meeting just for that purpose.
Yeah, we can have a combined closed session the next time it comes up.
I'd support that.
So that leaves the resolution as written and posted on the table. Yes, Jared?
Charlie.
I was just going to point out that I will modify Schedule C noting where records have been located. That'll be the small change to Schedule C when it comes in the final version next Monday.
Jared?
I'm going to move that we push Resolution Number 2017-08-059R, Resolution Regarding the Release of Our Closed Session Minutes for the Period Ended in August 28, 2017, forward to the City Council for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. Seeing no further discussion, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, negative, no, if this passes and is moved on to the City Council with recommendation for approval. And there being no further business, before this body, I declare adjournment.